Is the is there anything about uh the violation fines in this?
No, because uh it automatically unless you guys specify otherwise it's a class A violation.
Yeah. Right. And we don't specify otherwise, so it is a class A. However, it might be proven to either specify or at least make sure it's understood that they that for each additional violation it will be a twenty percent increase.
If we don't, if we don't specify
Yeah.
It's automatically a fine.
Could someone make the uh case that it could have been less? Cause we didn't specify.
Yeah, it could. Because what does that language actually say? An amount equal to the greater of twenty percent of the maximum fine.
I I think it would be good. So.
Or the minimum fine prescribed by statute for the violation. So it says or the minimum fine prescribed.
I I think we could just put they're gonna be fined the maximum allowed by law. In there and and then that way we can use whatever law we want.
Plus twenty percent for each additional fine.
And then that way we're not purling ourselves on.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we need to after a year or two, we need to change that we can always change. It's a good way to start up.
I thought we were gonna walk it into five years.
Is it gonna be like parade?
Yeah, but is there is there is there an out for this?
But I I do, you know, before we shut down for lunch, we do need to figure out what we need to do on our ordinance to change that. And so
For camping.
You know for the camping thing, for the RV thing, for the storage container thing. I don't mind people having storage containers. But I think to put a storage container on place you gotta to permit it for one. And and that would, you know, and the permit doesn't have to be very expensive. What are you thinking, Darrell?
Well, so there's some things that are exempt from the code, there was codes. So less than two acres, it's two hundred feet or less.
Yeah.
Less than a commercial zone is a hundred twenty feet or less as a storage structure, not higher than ten feet maximum height or mean height, I think is the numbers they use. Um and then it's four hundred feet square feet or more if you're over two acres. So I mean you can get into a pretty big storage structure that doesn't even require permits at all.
Yeah, but we.
And these structures, I mean these kind of containers, wherever.
Yeah, but our but but our our ordinance can be more restrictive.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely be more restrictive, you know.
And so.
On the building side, they, you know, if they start putting windows in or door so on and so forth. Uh you know, it's not they're not, it's not saying they can't be made into a residence. It's just when they start doing that, yes, it means permitted as what it's gonna be. On the storage side of it, it needs all the requirements, the land use, and it wouldn't be permitted.
But this thing we're gonna start you know, you need a permit for one of those storage containers. That'd be a that'd be a big change, a lot of running around checking everything because when did it show up? I mean, when did it become effective? Well, that was there before you put your ordinance in place. I mean, there's a hundred thousands maybe, these storage containers.
So so what's the better idea? What we need to do?
Well, I I'm not opposed to the state's, you know, exempt stuff. I mean, four hundred is a that's a very hard structure. It's hard to, because that gets really tempting to start turning it into a livable space when you can start charging reps of a hundred.
But it's the five, ten, the twenty parcel box that you find five hundred more.
A thousand dollars, yeah. I mean, when we're bringing this all back to nuisance and enforcement, you know, once we tackle the really, really bad ones that are out there and then we're still needing to have job security for folks, then I think maybe we start looking at some of that other stuff to really get down in the weeds, but to me, I mean, we this position will be extremely busy for years to come. I mean, with all the mountain cleanup and then we can start getting into that other storage structures turn into something else. You'll start seeing, I mean, you you're not gonna ignore them. You're you're gonna
If they're living in it, then they're not permitted for a structure. I still think you have that route to go, just based on the discretion.
Deal them on case by case.
Yeah, but what if they say they're not living in it and there's four or five trailers there on a piece of.
If it but if they're
There's laws violation.
But if they're living in it, I think the evidence of them living there would be there. For instance, where is the excrement going? You know, all all that uh starts to factor in. And for that position, I mean, that, you know, for however the investigation I mean, that you're have will have to pay that person anyways, so so something of that.
And all.
Those file, those closing cases takes on takes on some other
As long as he goes on the.
And I I think it should reflect.
On the abatement side, that's another thing. When we start abating all these RVs, which there's hundreds of abandoned or semi abandoned, where are we where where are we gonna take that to?
Yeah, and I don't I don't know about RVs and them cars, you know, they they go on VIN numbers.
I mean, that's just something that I've been
RV has a VIN number.
Thinking about because there's no way we could afford to, you know, tow a thousand RVs down here and put them somewhere. You know?
We have county lots on the north end of the county, we have transfer sites and
Now we'd have to go finish it up.
Potential of it around the coast.
Otherwise we're gonna be in there.
Yeah.
Uh yeah.
I'm not sure how that.
Okay, um it's noon, um
Yeah, noon, it's scary.
We have five more items on the agenda. Uh would everyone like to take a break for lunch or just get through it?
Well, I gotta quit.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying to shake.
Mark it out.
I gotta quit.
Let's just do it. I'll get fast.
Let's get through it. Okay, let's.
Yeah, but have have we discussed the um you know, stop work order or something like that, like somewhere.
Oh, I added some language in that for you in the code enforcement handbook.
Okay.
Like I added language saying that you have the right to investigate a property and right of entry.
Right, I see no that.
Yeah. Right, right. And you said thank you.
So is that something that's gonna be adopted soon? So that the the whole international one?
I hope things adopt that too.
We're adopting the whole international book.
In the code enforcement handbook.
Yeah, or possibly. And then so what you implemented is just no, we're not.
You're good.
Oh.
But I mean, so all of your stuff is in that international deal. So we're adopting all of your stuff in that book.
Uh okay.
And then and then uh
Plus the right of entry.
Then the then the permitted solar structural. We didn't get there, did we?
Well, I gave Kenny like an option and I haven't heard back. And then I don't know about your process. I don't know if you guys have to add submit that to the state per approval too? Because it's a new fee. I don't know how that works. We need to circle back and get.
Well, the fee the fee was on there and then it then it went away from the state level and then they're allowing the county to adopt it. So we're just gonna, we just.
So we don't even have to submit this, okay.
You don't have to submit anything because it's the the structural fee is already there. It's a it's a it's a um it's for the project. It's it's a percentage of the project.
That that's a little.
Alright.
Yeah, so all all the county has to do is it just it just adopt that in as a as a permitted part of the building process.
Okay, so I can get that on the agenda for as an addition tomorrow and then I can start that hearing process too. Don't have a bunch of hearings.
Mm-hmm. That would be very interesting.
At once.
That works. Yeah, that would be pretty before before the solar gets.
Get it from ya.
Yeah.
And we're gonna probably be adopting some other sort of things too, I'm assuming.
We're getting done.
Yeah, no, I just I gotta call them and uh I've got to meet them, so so they'll be entertaining it. What do you?
Alright. Okay, with that, uh Melanie, the ODOT agreement.
Right.
Yeah, appreciate the input.
Hey.
No problem.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you, Danny.
Yeah, you're welcome.
ODOT agreements, um three, five, one, seven.
So so this is for the next bidenium for ODOT. It is for one hundred thirty five thousand four hundred dollars to be shared equally or equitably between Interport Family Center and Lake County Senior Citizens Association.
And our contribution is the fourteen thousand one hundred sixteen.
No.
So that's it's local match, but.
That is coming from STF funds. Um we we don't pay any fee for transportation.
Oh, okay. Alright.
And some of that comes from in-kind volunteer hours.
Okay. Okay, so it's all state funds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have no other questions then.
Where do you see the uh the dollar figures there?
It's right on the front page.
Uh Uh well, there were some, but there was a there was another chart on page eleven.
Oh.
Well, the front page talks about two hundred thousand.
Yeah, it has the two hundred thousand and then one hundred eighty six, but you'll see the local match. I guess those are the STF.
I might. Sorry. Maybe I should clarify. Some of these are STF funds and some are fifty three ten federal funds. We're getting one hundred thirty five thousand four hundred four uh fifty three ten. Maybe I don't have the whole agreement.
Do you have page eleven?
Oh, yeah. I don't have my desk now. Oh, so I don't have the fifty three ten one. This is um the one thirty five four hundred is for uh STF and the other amount is for fifty three ten. And there's no match for STF. Or STIF.
Okay.
And the STIF is a communal fund.
But that local match, it it adds up to fourteen hundred, but it comes in two different pieces, in six thousand and then seven thousand six hundred.
Fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
So if we were to.
Fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand total, one hundred sixty.
So like at one point when I first started, their budget was terrible. Um and we've cleaned that up, but they ran out of STF funds for match. So they were liable for their own match per the agreement. So if it's not on the county's back, we just administer this. So if if one of the providers runs out of available match, then it's on them to provide the match.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Good mark. Good, alright. Um CSU uh contracts.
So this contract is for the income demographic survey from Portland State University. Um it kinda just goes over what they're going to do, their what they're responsible um our costs that we've already agreed upon. And then if you guys approve this, they can begin the demographics study for the community development block grants, for the water project, and for the library.
Didn't we already agree on this? And this is just a study?
This is just a formal contract, yeah.
Yeah. And if we approve this, do you want me to just go ahead and sign through the email that they sent to me?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then we can just keep this one for a wonder. I think that helps speed that up because we do we do wanna get those submitted as soon as possible.
That's what I was thinking. I just go ahead and give them their um Google app signature thing, whatever it is. Okay. Have any questions or anything? Pretty much exactly what we were all talking about.
So the second amendment to this um OHA agreement for the youth summit before it said it was for adult services, adult prevention, and then this agreement just changes it to youth ser youth prevention. So there's no fiscal impact. It's just a language change.
This is the one directing it to.
Yeah, I think July twenty seventh through twenty ninth or something like that. And then the next um OHA ohHA agreement is for public health for their metrics. Um and then so it is allocating thirty seven thousand six hundred twenty seven dollars for public health prep preparedness. Pub um public health prep, sorry. Uh alcohol and drug prevention is fifty three thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and thirty eight cents. Um WIC for July through September is two hundred and seventy nine dollars. WIC for October through June is eight hundred and thirty five dollars.
This.
Public health immunizations is two thousand seventy two dollars.
Now, this is the one that we didn't print out.
No, um it's for the bidenium. So it kinda just sets up the metrics and I sent it to you guys. I can print it for you guys. People are gonna do it.
No, 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 yeah.
I sent it to legal counsel. He says it's fine. It was.
It's a hundred and thirty six some some odd pages.
Yeah.
We might need something tomorrow though. Prove it.
Okay.
Having something from us.
Okay.
One particular page or something.
Okay.
For a summary.
I can do that.
I looked over it and the email was pretty big substantial, but it was pretty breathing. Yeah, plot line. It was great. Um okay, so beyond that, uh next up burn ordinance.
So a little bit of history, James worked with the Lake County Fire Defense Board uh to uh create this burn ordinance for Lake County. Um this spring, this was a topic in one of our work sessions. Um I asked to provide a comment or I I guess I gave comment um to this and just finally uh reconnected with uh Chief Little and uh Deputy Sheriff Tag on my questions. Uh we were able to uh answer everything that I had as far as concerns and whatnot. Uh this, there was there was some uh you know, uh concerns or uh things that I just wanted to have clarified about declaring uh declaring burn season or you know, and then and then declaring uh having it be shut off, you know, things like that. So if our chief, for example, in uh Silver Lake cannot uh change uh the burn or burn ordinance in Chris's Valley. And Chris's Valley can't do anything about Summer Lake or Summer Lake can't do anything about uh Westside, you know, Thomas Creek Westside, et cetera. They're all kind of their own areas. They recommend to the commissioners about uh you know when to burn and when to shut it off. They can they can enforce it, but they can they recommend and we we uh accept it.
We act, yeah.
Yeah.
And uh.
Burn ban is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, the burn ban. Did you have, did did Dustin, you uh iron out those last few things and just kinda get the language situated?
Yeah, so it also got ran before Dustin Gustavson, just forgot, but he agreed with everything that we were looking at. Didn't see any changes, so.
Okay, so if somebody does want a burn
they still go through the regular processing, contacting uh
Yeah.
M one, you know, or the the work number asking for the the burn permit. Um the folks there will
So that is a shot to get a permit.
The folks there will talk to the chief, ask, you know, hey, this is when they wanna do it, this is the duration, this is the size, this is the location. Pretty good. Chief will reply back and still have that ability to to issue a burn permit.
Actually, one of the biggest topics of debate was the fact that there are eight exceptions to burn ordinance that had al already laid in there. So that we say burn ban, but is it really a burn ban if we have as many as eight exceptions to it? And so that was, you know, one of the big things, you know, that we wanted to kinda walk through and make sure that we're being appropriate. And there was some additional language and dark dark and then I just think was superfluous that needed to be there. And so Barry caused some really good points and we just just made adjustments. Um people can still have burn barrels. Um there's allowances for cooking, for for generating heat. Um uh firefight fire uh training activities. Um and within those exceptions, there's also safety precautions that are outlined, like for instance, burn barrels and everything else.
Twenty five foot clearance or?
Twenty five foot clearance. And with the what does it say here? Yeah, screen. Um minimum of one gallon of water or two pound uh two and a half pound fire extinguisher and shovel. Uh there's lots of different things that it just lines out there for guidance and just for people to take precautions. And as well as a exemption for fourth of July June twenty third to June eleventh. Or July eleventh. So.
I wanted to make sure that the local landowners still have that ability to uh burn pile if they need to burn pile. There's a process to do that. And they can get an exception if our chief thinks it's uh safe and acceptable.
Yeah.
I didn't want uh something telling me what you can't do, um and no exception.
Yeah, I I think that was all on number seven. Any open burning that is permitted with a with a formal burn pit through the fire authority with jurisdictional fire responsibility and legal authority to issue burn permits. So, thank you. Just starting the process down tomorrow. Move forward with implementing that as the permanent ordinance for Lake County. Alright, um anything else coming for us? With that, we will adjourn at.
We, oh hang on, we have a new liaison up.
Okay.
Two.
Two of it.
Alright. I wasn't, I wasn't saying things. Forgive me, go ahead.
Sorry.
Okay, one of them will be on fiber. The other one is on uh
Greater Idaho.
Greater Idaho. Oh, okay. I'll let you lead me into the Greater Idaho.
Okay, so Barry was thinking that maybe we should discuss a time ahead of time when we're gonna hold this Greater Idaho thing because he's gotten some feedback on people weren't able to attend because we didn't advertise very well. Which is true.
Yeah.
Um so I didn't know if you guys, or Barry didn't know if you guys wanted to like set up a time for September twenty second where we can start letting people know ahead of time.
Shouldn't do it in the afternoon? Or even the evening meeting?
Yeah.
Like three, four o'clock, five?
I'm fine.
Four o'clock and then everybody talk for.
Yeah. Because the day's the day's pretty much set in stone. Uh the only reason we got the variance on the last one was because you were good. You were out, I was out, and for lack of a corner, we can't have a meeting. And we just said we'd just move it to the next Tuesday and uh and that was part of the reason why there was just a lack of ability to notify everyone. But the next one will definitely hopefully be more people.
Okay, so if you guys are good with that, we'll advertise, we'll have it in the evening. You know, the goal is that we have, we may have to do a little more fact finding ourselves. And uh so that we have something to actually talk about instead of the only Greater Idaho's information.
Yeah.
Or somebody that brings something to crap, you know. We need we need something to share with the public. Uh maybe, you know, Idaho, Oregon, things like that, you know, that we you know, concerns we brought up in the last one. So that it at least is worthy of a uh good discussion. So that people can see what see what we got, see what we're debating.
I think having some structure and I took a lot of notes during that last meeting and I think having some structure to to know where we're going would be really good. So, I don't wanna know that pretty for all. Yes, I don't know.
Okay. Any other? So the last week, uh this is a new topic. What we I met with a company on Friday called Elevate Technology Group. And one of the things that Elevate Technology Group uh is done right now is they're helping the community of Mackenzie River. Mackenzie River is one of the communities that got burned over with fire last uh Labor Day. Where they lost a lot of infrastructure and they are helping build a fiber optic plant for the community um to bring them up to today's technology uh with with fiber, high-speed internet. The whole mapping of the whole area and it is a combination of um fiber and microwave or you know, satellite or dish, I guess is what we're trying to get at. So they're doing a really good job and you can uh look them up online and kinda read about that. They came to us and this is the first time we've visited with them, but this is a little more serious conversation. And they would like to uh help develop a plan for Lake County. We've got uh some fiber here, there and everywhere, uh but we don't have uh fiber and uh dish capabilities in a good part of Lake County. This with the potential of Lake County receiving funding uh for fiber to help rural Oregon with emphasis on K through twelve students and bringing high-speed internet into homes, uh we need a plan. Otherwise, we're we're gonna have a hodgepodge of everything and we're never gonna be in front of it as far as uh requesting dollars. You know, and so if we have a grand plan for Lake County, this will help us be more competitive for future funding, for grants. And will give us a plan that will make us uh stronger, I guess, as a county. It's also could very well change how Lake County uh looks in the future. Uh there's a lot of people that uh love Lake County, would love to move back to Lakeview or or Paisley or you know, their hometown where they graduated from or grew up in. But we don't have high-speed internet and it doesn't support the business that they work for. And uh this would be a game changer in that respect. Uh Elevate has uh offered to help us uh come up with that master plan, so to speak. And uh they are well respected. Um and uh but one of our concerns is that when we do get money and we have smaller groups that wanna do this, this, and this, that we could get over it. Or duplicating or duplicated or missing missed areas that we intended to have done. And we're still out um in those rural spots than the county. So I guess uh one of the recommendations is, you know, one of the things that we need to consider is we do have ARPA money. And uh one of the emphasis items in ARPA was uh broadband for uh K through twelve in rural Oregon. That we get these areas up to speed and have that provide that service for them. And so this does uh allow us to use ARPA dollars potentially for a company like this to help develop that master plan. They have also agreed to uh stick through it throughout the life as till it's all completely built, kinda help maintain it. And there was also some discussion about whether the county could actually own some of the infrastructure where it would pay out to the county in increments of who knows what at this point. Not looking to get rich off of it, but at least we have control of it. Melanie, what did I miss?
You did a great job.
Okay, so uh we know we have time before we have to make a decision on ARPA. We're kinda waiting to hear from the state whether we're gonna get funded here by the end of June. As far as uh other dollars um that are coming to us through uh what's that funding called?
Uh they have a structure of one.
They have a structure.
Yeah, they like investment.
Investment.
Rural investment, yeah.
So we're waiting to hear what we're gonna get, whether we're getting money from fiber, whether it's railroad, whether it's et cetera, et cetera.
Uh one more thing, um L C R I offer to help administer our broadband if we need it. I don't know if you or don't, but it's also something for you guys to.
Which uh would would give them a shot in the arm, uh they are five oh one C three. And uh would give them some purpose there to help the county as far as that resource initiative. And you know, in a different way than they've gone fast instead of natural resources on the fire side.
It was definitely helpful having SCOED administer some of our CRF funding for the business.
We couldn't have done it on top.
Right, so you know, you guys might wanna consider taking L C R I up under our offer. It's not necessary, but it could be very useful.
So when we have that July meeting, um I think our first July work session, this probably could be in the topic list. Something that we should consider approving or adopting and how to incorporate or not incorporate it without L C R I.
Well, I mean, just what I commented in the meeting, I apologize, I couldn't stay through the whole thing, but for one, it shows us a true needs analysis. Cause you know, me being virtually literate when it comes to those things, I have no clue what the true needs are in that aspect. Um and so and we don't have a fiber master plan at all. And I think that's one area that we need to get up and going. Because our, the more I'm in economic develop development, the more I see this is like the main thing we have to have to make things work and uh so I'm excited about it and I'm looking forward to it something.
And it's and it's also uh as simple as we know Zayo is trying to get approval to run, you know, the big fiber, basically all the way through Oregon to Reno. And we need a a hub or an outlet here in Lakeview uh where we can, you know, have a uh inlet to Zayo's fiber lines there where we can attract other businesses and things like that.
So are we gaining any traction on that from them or?
Well, I think this is a game where a company like Elevate can help us with that and have have those uh, we we can talk to Zayo, certainly ourselves.
But so just for me to try to understand, when we go back to us owning some of the infrastructure, our infrastructure would come from that big fiber ice sales out.
I can't say yes or no to that.
Well, I mean, that's if if we were to own, I think that's a that's a hit.
Yeah, I mean.
Like a farm.
What's that?
Like an farm off with that are like.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's like it's like a, the way Zayo guys described it to us, it's like an off-ramp of highway.
Yeah, so.
It's a major highway, it's an off-ramp and so you're gonna have one south of town, they're gonna have one up here at Paisley and so basically when I spoke to them, the question was whether or not we could get one closer to Lakeview and closer to areas that that, you know, where the population is. But if there's the off-ramp's gonna be south of town, guys like this other group, you know, that we're working with and is, you know, we need to have a way to get it here, yeah.
Yeah, it's just like our, the natural gas line is owned by Red Rock to Red Rock and then it's owned by us after that, or would be.
You own the capacity.
Yeah. And so and that's what we would do virtually in this case.
It would be it would be a shame if there wasn't an off-ramp in our communities and in the county. And I don't know if we can get all of them, but we at least need to make that pitch and try to have that done for us, so it could help us economically in the future.
I think Elevate would be objective too, like they just wanna help Lake County connect, you know, like they don't have like a north versus south mentality. They wanna just equitably help us. Um I think they need to probably help more more, but but but.
And it takes maybe, you know, obviously we're the decision makers, but it helps give us uh recommendations to us how to build this, how to do it right, yeah, what what is duplication, what is not, where we go next, et cetera. Yeah. And and obviously if you have this plan in place, then like I said, you automatically move up to the next level of funding uh where there's a bigger pot of money and less competition.
Without a fiber master plan, we're at the bottom of the rear, really, we're just another player.
It puts us in that in that category of, you know, having nearly shovel-ready projects and a vision. And we know that we need a third party, you know, uh group, either it's these guys or someone else, no matter what, but these guys, if they build the plan, I mean, that's that's what we need. We need a third party in order to do that handshake between the fiber on the north end, between L S N and Hunter and whoever else is down here.
But if we own the fiber, then we wouldn't have to worry about those other players.
So do you guys feel comfortable with me asking them to get together like a proposal for a quote for a master plan and bring us in and see?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yep.
About if they can, if they have the time, that'd be great, um.
One hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, whenever they get that proposal done, I mean, I don't wanna be the dead horse and keep bringing them back, but it would be nice if they would at least have a spokesman in the ears.
Or they can do it on.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So I have one other update.
Sure.
Uh few weeks ago, three weeks better ago, an Atleva with uh state, you know, regional solutions, uh sent out an email talking about a RACE grant. A RACE grant is a transportation grant. It's very uh limited in the amount of people that uh are successful in getting a RACE grant. We're talking very low, like one percent of the applicants, but uh we have been encouraged by ODOT and by Business Oregon to put in an application for the railroad. Uh and it would encompass the rest of the proposal of upgrades that the Chrissy grant does not cover. So this would be to the tune of about sixteen million dollars. Uh the RACE grant has a minimum of one million dollar award and a maximum of twenty five million. Each state cannot exceed twenty five million dollars. And so we would be, you know, trying to figure out what's going on in the rest of the state. Obviously, you can't get the grant if you don't apply.
Yeah.
Uh I did, I've been in contact with Sharon Leidy, uh the lady who's helping us with grant writing, who we have on contract. And she is working on it, okay. We've also uh, you know, talked with uh Ann Kramraine helped us uh have the discussions with her so we can get her off on the right foot because Ann was such an integral part of the Chrissy grant.
Right.
And uh so we'll see where it takes us. But just wanted to let you guys know that we'll be probably putting in an application for further funding for the railroad.
And is there a match on that one, Barry?
It does not ask for a match, but uh it it does talk about an eighty twenty type of thing. Uh but it wasn't specific on match, did not specify you had to have a match.
Okay, and what was the timeframe on that? That was one of my questions.
You have to have a letter in uh by Friday, this Friday? But your actual application is due the following Friday.
Okay, so is the letter in, do we have the assurance in the letter, is that?
Twenty four. I guess, no. She just had the conversation yesterday.
So maybe if we put a letter together, we can have it as an amendment, as an addition on tomorrow's.
No, she won't get the letter done until Friday, let's do.
She, I think she just needs to send submit the letter of intent by Friday.
Letter of intent.
So it's nothing you guys need to take action on.
She she she.
Yeah, we don't have to, sure, it's okay, sure, it just takes a curve, okay, that's fine.
Letter of intent that we will be applying and then the following, it's either due the June thirtieth or the twenty fourth, I can't remember.
Us, long as she considers it.
Yeah.
On time, um okay, so I want you guys to be aware of that. So you guys. Alrighty, anything more?
I have to use tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, you're you're waiting. Alright, with that, um you know, I I don't really have too many updates on AOC, AOC was really good, Mark and I went, I just got back. Uh it was a really good discussion with everyone in AOC, AOC is going to be buying a building uh across the street from the current AOC building. So um where CIS is currently, which is in Salem, right?
They they were restricted during COVID by the landowner where they couldn't meet in person and have meetings there and so this is gonna make it where we can, we the commission, the counties have control over.
Is this gonna raise our rates?
No, sure. Um so but uh they're it should actually save money and the Executive Board met last night, um they went into executive session, came out and made the decision to buy the building. And so it was just good discussion though and uh Matt Houston and I waited outside till we heard, till everyone came out. That's always what had kinda happened. Um other than that, we're looking forward to uh legislative um uh meeting, our legislative meeting in uh August up at Hermiston and then we have another AOC day in Tillamook County in September. So other than that, I have nothing else, um we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at twelve forty. And we'll grab some lunch.